Excuse me.
Is that right? Yeah, we're live.
We are.
And the call was September 8th Board of Education meeting. Roll call, Mr. Casey.
Here.
Mrs. Koenig.
Here.
Mrs. Ginsley has been excused. Mr. Johanning.
Sure.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Keel.
Here.
Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Sim.
Here.
We all please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds, justice for all.
Can I have a motion to adjourn for a minute? Mr. Ryan. Second.
Second.
Every last two minutes will come over. Any questions? Any concerns? And motion made by Mr. Ryan, second by Mr. Sim on favor.
Aye.
All proposed. Absent. Yes, it's eight to zero. New business. Yes.
I'd like to thank Dr. Perry and all of his cabinet for working tirelessly to get us to the point we are today. And we'll have a better handle on it next week and see exactly how you've done since this has been thrown under the bus, so to speak, coming into this. And having been on the board, and I'm sure the others on the board here can agree with me, this is not that easy. Every day, seems like every day that something has changed. New general order or mandates come out from downtown, state ed, et cetera. So I personally would like to thank you and your staff for getting it done. And we'll have a better handle on it on Tuesday of next week.
Monday.
But Tuesday, I'm giving you the day. Let's get the kids into school and then Tuesday we'll take a look at it again. It may all change. Make change.
I agree, and I also want to wish all the teachers a lot of luck with this school year. Being a teacher myself, I know we need it. All business. Oh, you have news?
Two quickies. One, I had sent out a note to everybody a few weeks ago about an ISB service for board evaluations similar to what we were doing for the superintendent evaluation. It's a service we got in an email. We have a free demo to the end of this month. So it's basically automating filling out the forms and pulling all the responses together. I don't remember how much it is, but it was in the email I sent you. I don't remember. And obviously, I don't think we can afford it to share, but something to look at down the road in the future. I did find on the website, though, a showable PDF version that's supposed to go paper in case you want to fill it out online yourself instead of doing it on the paper and then have to take a whole one off. That was one. Second thing that I did, I went to the ISB policy workshop last month. They do like a quicker review and not a lot new this year, but a couple of things they just reminded us that we should just look at. And I sent Dr. Perry a list of things that we should probably get on the radar for this year for some of the stuff we had there. They did talk about what we did last time with the resolution to kind of lay policy in light of changing regulations. So, but when this is all done, if they're saying you might want to take a look at it because there's certain things you might want to keep doing like remote learning. There may be something in there that doesn't allow it or something. So as we review them, we'll be looking for that over the next year.
Neil, question on your first piece there with the superintendent evaluation. Did you say that was a free demo?
Yes.
And they're going to come to us or?
It's a board evaluation. It's not that we evaluate ourselves.
Right.
But I send an email. It's got a login, your KCD@southcolony.org. And then there's a spreadsheet with everybody's password. The first thing you do is go in and change it to whatever the password is.
Okay.
Just look carefully because they had my information wrong, so I had to send it.
So it's available for the board to look at and it's not going to cost us anything?
Correct.
All right, very good. Thank you.
We only have until September 24th?
I think it's the end of the month. I'm not sure. But you know, I'm sure they'll, if you want to take a few extra weeks, things, you know.
You might understand.
They also said if you decide to keep it, they're not going to delete any data. So if you've been typing in some practice data, they're not going to go delete it after you started over. A lot of people pick it up and try it, and if they like it, they just keep going. So that's the option. Should we decide to come up with whatever the $1,000 is or whatever. But it was BoISI's. BoISI's A double O, and I forgot what our reference for BoISI's, so. Yeah, thank you, Brian. Any questions?
So in addition to thanking the teachers and the administration for all their efforts, there's been some amazing PK folks that have stepped up to collaborate. I gave a shout out today to Kelly Matisia, Lisa Knowles for answering a bevy of questions from folks on the high school page. They've had, you know, Catch has been fantastic with communication to them. I've encouraged my fellow board members sign up for their PK memberships. This year, PKs are going to need those, that support more than ever. And I can send out a link so you can check, pick and choose which schools you want. And then I did have two questions for Dr. Perry. Clarity on the lunch update from the USDA and an update on where things stand with movement with the music program.
Let me start with the first question, and I'm assuming you're talking about the extension of the ability for districts to provide free meals through the end of 2020 calendar year. Correct. So there was some changes that was set to expire at the end of the summer. They've extended that through the end of December of 2020, which means that we can continue to provide meals, reimbursable meals at no cost to the student for both in-person and virtual students. They just need to notify us similar to what we did throughout the spring and into the summertime period. We'll continue to provide those meals. The district does get a percentage of the reimbursement back. It doesn't cover all expenses, but it certainly is a great opportunity for our students to continue to get fed during this difficult time. So we're happy for that support. The second question was update on the music position. We had Carolyn Weeks, our longtime choral director of the high school, retire first week in September. Obviously, we wish Carolyn well. It was not an expected retirement. We had anticipated her coming back, but she dealt with it at the right time, so we're happy for her. And in the interim time period, what we are looking at due to a hybrid schedule is reducing the position to strictly the ensemble groups. That would be a part-time position. As a temporary adjustment, it's difficult to provide course instruction under the pandemic for having to wear masks and things like that. But we are still planning to have those classes. What we're foregoing is the choral lessons for 2020, 2021 school year while we're in the hybrid model. Couple reasons for that. Number one is that students will be in a one-third rotation. So classes in the chorus will be small to begin with. And then when you get into the idea of students moving throughout the building to come out of lunchtime for lessons, that becomes a little bit problematic as well. We are also in tight fiscal restraints. So to be honest, we're looking at a $5.1 million reduction in state aid. So this was certainly a way that we could consider reducing the program on a temporary basis. But long term, we obviously want to reinstate that program going into full in-person instruction. We value the efforts that Miss Weeks and all our students have done over the years. Tremendous, tremendous program and success for our students. But we see that taking place when we're fully back in person, whether that will be sometime during this school year or more than likely starting next fall with in-person instruction. And that will include the reinstatement of that position. One thing I would say is that all of our positions, it seems like music has taken a hit this year. All of our positions have been evaluated over the years. And certainly, we've had some changes in music recently due to a couple layoffs. We had staff member leave, and we've chosen not to reinstate the fourth grade strings position which was originally in our budget. Again, a lot has to do with managing the pandemic response at the K4 level with having students that are in person and some that are opting out. We're hopeful that some of these moves are temporary, but we are looking at reductions throughout this year. One of the things we're looking at in addition to spending is what we do when people leave our employment. So we are now looking at furloughs or layoffs in the future to the greatest extent possible. We're looking at if somebody is leaving our employment currently, whether that's an instructional position or a support position, whether or not we need to replace that individual at this time. So we're evaluating not only instructional positions, which are obviously impacting the start of the school year, but our support staff positions as well on an ongoing basis. So those are the things we'll continue to look at. We'll be working with the board closely to identify ways to reduce that $5 million state aid deficit. Many of our area and neighbor school districts are looking at the larger gaps and deficits. And so they've made immediate adjustments. We feel that this music reduction is appropriate given the financial times, but also given the hybrid schedule, it will work best. We are working on some student schedules. There was a Hudson Valley Music Theory class. We're still looking at whether we can staff that in-house so that we don't have to introduce that. There were about nine students that were in a class that was scheduled around that Miss Weeks was teaching. So we're still evaluating that component. The point four that is being presented tonight to the board for consideration would be for the choral ensemble groups, the in-person ensembles. And that's what the part-time position is.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan?
Quick question for either Dr. Perry or Mr. Backus. A couple of questions from households. Just an up-to-date update on where are we in terms of remote versus actual in classroom? Are we still about that 80/20 situation or?
Overall, we had, I think it was 979 students. It was about 25% that ended up opting out. So about 75% in-person, 25% virtual. And the majority of those students, those percentages are still higher at the K4 level. They were about 45, 46% at the K4 level, about 25%, 26%, roughly at five of eight, as well as the 912 levels. So those percentages kind of stayed the same. What had changed really was the total numbers. We had two opt-out windows. We did the first one in the earlier part of August for about a two-week time period. At that time, we had close to 790 students who had opted out through their family's submission of the form. We then had reopened the opt-out period for a little bit over three days and a weekend to allow for families who may have missed the deadline the first time around and allowed for additional opt-outs. At that time, we had another approximately 200 students. So we're just a shade under 1,000 students that opted out virtually. And we do recognize that there are probably still some families out there that missed the both deadlines, two deadlines. So with that, we are having to move forward with scheduling the virtual academy as well as the in-person class list. So for those families that are wondering when they're going to be assigned their virtual teacher or their in-person teacher, I believe the in-person teacher assignments at the K8 level have gone out today at about due time. The high school schedules are going to be released. And virtual schedules will be released later this week. We're still working on some of the numbers. Many of the questions and public comments tonight were attributed exactly to what virtual academy looks like. So I can answer those questions for you now, Mr. Ryan, or go into when the public comment.
Public comment, so.
Okay.
I want to say, I'm sorry, excuse me.
I just got to up the worst of my list. I know I probably differ from this from a lot of folk, but I have a business background, and even school is a business. And I think it is very, very important to let our taxpayers know what we're facing. This is not going to be a good year. We've already had 20% loss. What will be, Sherri, do you happen to know off the top of your head what is our projected loss this year?
For this year?
Yeah.
Depends on where. We're looking at about $5.2 million just with the 20%. Plus, if we fund UPK, it's anywhere between an additional 77 and $386,000.
So I think once I get above $5 million, it really doesn't make that much of a difference. That is an astounding number. And I want folks to, our taxpayers, to understand that when we're talking about a $5 million deficit and 83% of our budget is personnel expenses, is that right? There's nowhere, there's very little that we can cut besides staff. Of course, I don't want that to happen. I think we could be proactive in addressing it, getting in touch with our representatives, getting in touch with Governor Cuomo, any kind of help that we can post and get out to our folks saying, this is what you're doing to us. We're relatively lucky compared to Schenectady. But this is still not going to be good at all. And I want folks to really understand where we are as a district. All right? Totally changing courses, the school calendar. My gosh, what a work of art. Thank you very much. This is beautiful. It's a very nice refresh and a reorganization of some really useful information. I do want to note that the glossy paper does present a challenge to most pens. Yes, yes, that was a little bit, okay. And I do, I would ask, what was the difference in cost from the black and white to the color?
It was about $3,000.
There's fewer pages.
Yeah, because we condensed it a little bit, and then we had to obviously pay extra for the color.
I think it's lovely. I love how everything's laid out. I think it's just terrific. Thank you very much. Fall sports, we've been talking about this. I'm glad that some are returning. I'll buy, albeit with some constraints. It's important to note that these constraints will lead to increased workload for coaches and the district personnel. However, I really believe we owe our kids this bit of normalcy, and that increased effort is needed and appreciated. Lastly, I'm going to piggyback what Brian said and what Michael said. It astounds me, the work that has been done to get us where we're going to be come Monday. From the custodians learning new safety measures to the bus drivers doing a lot more than driving a bus. Everybody has been really working so hard. A parent's love for their children is enormous, but our South Colony staff's affection and caring for our students' well-being and education are beyond measure. Thank you. To this end, I invite all students and parents and staff and everybody involved next week to give grace, not grief. There will be, well, we won't say there will be a million things wrong, but there'll be a lot of things wrong. But they'll get reminded. They'll be, you know, but if somebody has something to say, please say it positively. Please say it, you know, nicely. And if you can, if the issue can wait, then let it wait. I want to ensure that many of our South Colony employees are also parents, and they deserve the opportunity to leave work at work and go home and be with their families. So again, next week, I hope, is a week of grace. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Actually, I was going to say something similar about next week, but also to wish our kids the best of luck.
Absolutely.
If we don't include them in our good luck, it's new for them as well.
Thank you, Stephanie, for those comments. And I agree. I think that whether our kids are coming back in person or virtual, we want them to have a great start to the school year. I think our staff are working extremely hard. From our nurses who are going to be on the front lines working through the pandemic protocols and things like that, our custodial staff, food service who have been working tirelessly throughout, and our teachers who came back today, and many of our support staff personnel who've been here from transportation. They're all doing new things. We're assigning seats on the buses, which is completely new to us. We're having to drive a bus and distance. In fact, you know, not the same kind, but throughout the same route. So we're going above and beyond, and our staff are meeting those challenges. I wish everybody good luck. My opening message today to the staff was very much what Stephanie had talked about was we may not hit every homerun, but we're going to work hard to try to do the best we can. We ask for your patience, and if we misstep, your forgiveness, but we will do the best to continue to improve each day. And we think we're going to be off to a great start next week. We look forward to the kids coming back, whether that be in-person or virtual. So good luck to everybody.
Your co-partner today was great.
Can I piggyback with a question from Steph? Have we heard, obviously, you know, the governor does his own thing. But locally, have we heard from Mr. Steck or Mr. Breslin?
We have not. They're certainly aware. We've had several conference calls with Senator Breslin. He is certainly aware of the plight of various school districts and very supportive of our efforts. You know, it is a tug-of-war between those federal monies and the state monies at this point in time. As we know, it's a political waiting game. Unfortunately, school districts are not in that control. So as we hear more information, we are hopeful, but we're also making the appropriate recommendations in place to cut those spending where necessary in order to avoid even more difficult year going into the following year. We want 2021 to be as good a school year as it can be, but we know that 2021, 22 can be equally challenging if we're not fiscally responsible this year. Unfortunately, no, nothing that's going to help us at this point right now.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to piggyback on Mr. Ryan's question about attendance. About the buses, how many people did have the bus to drive their kids in, or had those numbers? Or you get an answer again?
I don't have those numbers. I will try to pull them up and see if I can pull that information up. If not, we'll get that out. We did have, obviously, the thousand, close to 1,000 students who opted to stay home, reduced our overall number of students by about 25%. I think the last I knew, we were about 45% of students out of the 4,000 that were coming in person. About 45% had opted out of transportation. So that's certainly helpful, and we appreciate those families that have made that determination. With that, also comes some traffic challenges, and we're looking through those with a parent drop-off and as well as the bus arrival and dismissal.
Speaking of that, thank you to the PKs and the principals for doing the follow-up sessions that were the initial opening session. I know that Shaker Road is trying to get ahead of the bus queue, but then on King's Court, do you know any update on that one?
So one of the things that we're looking at is a temporary solution. It is the back end of Shaker Road. We have a side parking area and a paved lot. We are considering putting down some crusher run to allow buses to travel through King's Court, which is currently a dead end, the back end, for arrival dismissal of Shaker Road. It'd be about six buses in the morning, six buses in the afternoon for a short window of time.
That's by the book depository. That's what's going to be, as we discussed in the facilities.
Correct. So with that, it would be by the book depository. But that would allow our buses to come through, parents to stay in the front of Shaker Road. And we look at that as a temporary solution. We obviously wanted to speak more to the board tonight and get the initial go-ahead for it. But that is certainly an option, one of the things that we talked about, the facilities and trans committee at the most recent meeting. So from there, if we are going to move ahead with that plan, we would message out to those families on Merrick Lane and King's Court to give them some more assurance that their dead-end area is still going to remain quiet. It's not intended to be a permanent solution, or would it be intended to be a thoroughfare for anyone other than the buses? So part of that is also looking at the book depository and how that plays into the overall workflow of parents and parking and picking up in that back lot area. Currently, there's no parking in the back of Shaker Road, and so they park on King's Court, which is problematic and certainly if we can address the book depository location, that may also alleviate some of those concerns that I know that those families have expressed over the years. So Mr. Dollar has reached out to many of the families there. The next step will be conversation with the board, whether we feel that's feasible. We believe we can safely turn the buses around, and the crusher run will help on a rainy day. Right now, you can drive through there, but to be safe, we'd like to put some crusher run down to allow the buses to come in. They'll loop around on the side parking area and then back out. It's a small number of buses at Shaker Road. I think it's six total. But that would completely separate the student drop-off on buses from the parent pickup for both the AM and PM if we go in that direction.
I think that would be a good, and we can talk about it now. That would be a good solution for the neighbors' concerns of the parking that was occurring there also. I think once they explain to them how it would work, and only the very limited number of buses that would be going in and out twice a day, it would certainly be less problematic than that other situation we had with people parking on the lawns and things of that nature.
One of the things that we have mentioned is improving that back area. Right now, there's a chain length that went down. Parents will come and park closer to the building to get to the book depository. If we were to relocate the book depository, that eliminates the need to park back there as well as having additional people on King's Court throughout the entire day. So we can solve one problem. Potentially, we've relocated the book depository. We need that space this year for additional classroom space. So we are making some transitions throughout the September, and by October 1st, we'll transition that over to a classroom. But also, the bus turnaround would alleviate the parking by having it better blocked off so it's only district vehicles. We can safely indicate that people are not going to be able to pass through at any time for it.
Anyone else? All business?
Okay. So bear with me here. I'm just refreshing the page. We have a number of public comments. The first one asked to read, "What is being done to support our virtual academy community? Teacher, staff, and students deserve reasonable class sizes. There's no way one teacher, even with the TA support, should be expected to be responsible for 90 or more students. The pods should be the same as pre-pandemic class sizes." So let me get into, Mr. Ryan, your questions in relation to the virtual academy. The design of the virtual academy is such that we do have at K6, we had at least one teacher and one TA. We are working to increase the number of staff members. At the K2 level, our focus is trying to get two teachers and a TA assigned there, and we are two-thirds of the way home. So we have staff members that will help staff that. At the 3, 4, 5, 6 level, we are looking to add additional teacher or TA to support those students. We do have anywhere from about 80 to upwards of 100 students in the pods. That doesn't mean that 80 kids are going to be on one Google Meet. It's broken up into four sections, A, B, C, D sections. The morning sections A and B will be live with a teacher or TA in the morning. Approximately 25 students per class, anywhere between 20 and 25, depending upon level. With adding the third teacher or TA into that group, a third adult, those numbers now go down to thirds. So you're now looking at classes that are starting out 20 to 25, but having three adults. You can then separate that out into smaller groups. With that same thing, no one expects that our students that are virtual are going to be live for a six-hour school day as if they are in person. So those virtual days are split into AM and PM sessions. The AM session, if students are live with a teacher or TA, they will be working on direct instruction, Google Meet perhaps, some blended approaches. The PM portion of that afternoon for the students that were live in the morning will be some of our asynchronous instruction. This is RAS kids. These are recorded lessons in social studies or science. Some of our special areas like physical education, art, music. Those will be optional programs, but be designed and planned for by our South Colony teachers. So there's not a requirement to do virtual art, virtual phys ed at home, but that opportunity will be there, and we'll push that out every day. For those groups, C and D that start asynchronous or on the recorded sessions in the morning, they will be live in the afternoon. So they will, again, those teachers that are live in the morning will have a break in the middle of the day, lunch and planning, and then they will go live with the second group of students. Again, it's to manage the number of students that are in there to keep those pods between 20 and 25 students to allow the teachers to 20 and 25 students, to allow the teachers to best plan. Within that time period, though, there's no guarantee that a teacher has to go live with 20 or 25 students at one time. They can designate at their own devise having smaller group sessions. So part of the sample plans is to have some smaller groups. If math class goes from 9:15 to 9:45, there is a small group session that is from 9:45 to 10:15. So during that time period, a teacher can decide that she asks for five or 10 students to log back on in a smaller group session while the TA is also working in some small groups. So it's designed for flexibility. We are asking our teachers in the virtual environment to manage larger groups, similar to our high school staff, who manage anywhere from 100 to 120 students over five separate periods. The difference is they're not dealing with the day-to-day student management needs because the students are not in person. We will reevaluate the assessment process, what a report card looks like in the virtual academy, because we are looking for evidence of learning and progress that students are making as opposed to getting a particular grade for art or grade for physical education at the elementary level. So we are reevaluating what the assessment looks like. But we feel that the plan is appropriate, it is manageable, but we understand that it's not the same as the in-person. We've never said it was going to be. We want to make sure that we had a virtual option for families, that we have a safe option and one that we can support for the education progress of all our kids. We will have some stumbling. You know, we're dealing in what they call data. We're working in a virtual environment, which means technology is always a concern. We feel we've got a good plan, but if we misstep, we will improve upon it. We'll make strides to do that. One of the things that we've heard from our teachers is they've come in, is they like the autonomy to be able to create what it looks like, but they're also concerned about the management of the class numbers. So we are working to add additional staff members. With that same thing, there's just not an unlimited checkbook to add staff members, so that's one of the things we're looking at, how to manage the class sizes to make them reasonable at the same point in time, you know, to manage the entire district.
So for the lower grades, where, I think what I heard is you're trying to get two teachers and a TA for?
At K1, 2, we're going to have three adults, two teachers and a TA. At K1, 2, again, focusing on our youngest students. At 3, 4, 5, and 6, we'll have three adults. We are looking at, right now, a teacher and a TA and possibility of either a second TA or a second teacher. We're still working on what those needs are. And again, that's designed to provide some flexibility, but in the event that we have somebody who is ill, we want some continuity, so that third adult will provide some flexibility between the pods if the teacher is unable to perform their virtual assignment for a day, we'll be able to slide somebody in.
Do we have those numbers now, or is this going to entail doing some hiring?
We have the numbers of the teachers. We will potentially need to hire or convert a few TAs. We have approximately six TAs that are assigned to the virtual academy. At least four of them are certified teachers working under the TA umbrella, so that is a consideration that we will provide them teacher certification and backfill their TA spot. We don't have teachers just available. They've all been repurposed into our in-class, in-person pods. Many of our classes have gone from 20 to 21 students down to 12 and 13, so the in-person numbers are very low compared to most years, but that required repurposing our reading teachers and special education teachers in many of those areas. Again, that was our priority, K6 in-person since day one. So we've met that as our main goal. It doesn't mean that we don't want a good virtual experience for our students, and we're continuing to build that out. So that's kind of the plan at this point in time. We have two administrators that are working as the virtual principals, Jen Wells and Greg Barrop. Jen is our supervisor of English Language Arts and Reading. And Lersi and Mr. Barrop is our supervisor of Mathematics, Science, and Technology Engineering, essentially STEAM at the K8 level. So they are working hand-in-hand to deliver the ELA and math curriculum, to work with the teachers on planning for that, and also to hear their feedback and make adjustments as necessary. So they've been working with us for the last several weeks to work to staff it, as well as, again, continue to make some adjustments as this week goes on.
Looking forward, just one more question. Looking forward, when do parents have the option of changing their preference for in-person versus virtual or vice versa? They did that once during the year, I think, wasn't it?
So currently, what happens is if you have opted out, then you're opted out for the first semester, January 29th. The earliest you could return would be second semester, which is February 1. And if a parent has chosen to send their child to in-person instruction and chooses to opt out, we are asking for at least the first two weeks of the school year before any changes are made. We want to make sure the in-person experience is given an opportunity to lay some roots, as well as those that are in the virtual academy. We don't want to just, you know, transition and have five more kids go into a teacher's virtual classroom. So September 28th would be the earliest that we would allow opt-outs of in-person instruction. You cannot opt back in until February 1st. The January 29th could be that last date as of right now. Again, that's going to be dependent upon the metrics in the region and where we are with the COVID pandemic. If for some reason the restrictions are released prior to that, we'll reevaluate that timeframe. But it's been a big lift to get to this point, to create essentially two separate educational systems, one for in-person and one for virtual. Keep in mind, we are also providing the support services for students in both environments, that's special education and speech and OT and teletherapy and those kind of things. So those are all factors that go into play. Let me continue with some of the public comments here. The next question was very similar. Our daughter is enrolled in the remote kindergarten program. We're concerned about the number of students that are being assigned to one teacher. We're hoping they will consider more adequate staffing for the virtual academy to ensure a successful remote learning experience for both teachers and students. So I think we have at least commented on that. Thank you for that comment to Mr. Spector. Mr. Spector, very similar. My daughter is registered for virtual kindergarten. Understanding is there was one teacher and two teaching assistants assigned to an entire class of around 100 people. I don't see how that's fair to the teachers or students. Prior means it was discussed that class sizes would be 20 to 25. A Google Meet with 25 kindergartners just won't be effective. If in-person class sizes are getting much smaller, can we find another virtual teacher? So very similar. At kindergarten, the numbers are about 73. Those are still high, but we are adding additional teachers, so we have three adults, two teachers, and a certified TA in there, and we think that the approach of A, B, C, D pods will lessen those groups to allow for better experiences, certainly for those students that are in kindergarten for their first year of experience. We want that to be a good experience for them. Mrs. Montino wrote, "How many remote students are assigned each teacher? Where are the remote students in grades K6, including the pods of 25? Each teacher and TA will be responsible for as many as 100. The Q and A session stated that teachers would be assigned about 30 students each, even in pods of 25. How can a teacher be expected to provide the same attention to 100 students as teachers in person with 10 to 15?" She continued it due to character restriction. Pardon me. Let me read the second part here. "This is unfair to teachers and students and does not fulfill the promise of an equitable education established in the Q and A. Board members and administration, please do not support or promote inequities within South County Districts." So we thank you for your comment. We are working on the virtual academy, continuing to evolve that. Again, our primary efforts were based upon in-person K6 instruction on a daily basis since day one, but we will continue to work to make the virtual environment a good environment for all of our students and our teachers. Ms. Weaver asks, "I would like to change the needs for the foreign language through 11th grade. New York State requires one unit of foreign language for a Regents diploma or advanced designation diploma, three units is needed. A student completes their three units prior to 11th grade, then that should fulfill the need and requirements. The child should then be able to take necessary credits for graduation before or begin." We have addressed that through policy change. We did not eliminate the requirement, but we have provided some flexibility. Policy committee and the board have approved that change last spring. And for the start of this 2021 school year, any 11th grader who's in that situation can work with their guidance counselor at grade-level principal and defer the language requirement until their senior year. As the board knows, the board has the right to set standards that are higher than the minimum standards in New York State. So that's what we've done for about a 20-year time period with the foreign language requirement. It's worked well for our students. For those that may need some adjustments and flexibility, we feel that the new policy provides some flexibility to work with the counselor as well as the school principal to still meet the needs of each student. Mr. and Mrs. Light had asked, "We are concerned about student-teacher ratio that we're hearing about for remote Q and A. We were told that remote teachers would be assigned to 20, 30 students each, but we recently heard the remote teacher TA will now be responsible for several groups of 20 to 30 students. This isn't what we signed up for. How can this teacher be expected to give proper attention to that many kids? This is not equal education to remote kids we're promised and deserve." We are looking for, again, every opportunity to provide for a good experience for our virtual students. We feel that breaking the students down into smaller groups will be appropriate. We are still looking at 20 to 25 students in the pods in the virtual environment. We are just not offering a six-hour virtual experience live, and nobody was expecting that. We don't think that's good for students to be six hours on a live stream with teachers. So we've broken it down into smaller groups. We feel it's manageable. Our teachers at the high school level have done it for years. We will continue to work with our elementary teachers to redesign what that looks like. But that's not without adjustments. We'll continue to try to improve upon that. Ms. Dwyer had asked, "She sees that committees are scheduled through October 15th or posted. When will the family engagement committee meet and start working?" So very good question here. We are looking at October 6th for family engagement first meeting. We'll message out an agenda and some invites to community members to join that parent-family engagement committee as we get started. What we're looking at on October 6th is the initial date, and so we'll continue to message that out. I'm not sure, Ms. Planters, the committees that she mentioned are posted, are they online or are they last year's committees that scheduled dates?
I'm not sure. I'm just saying that.
We'll take a look. I think, I know in the past we had listed last year's committee dates. I'm not sure if this year's are updated or.
It's written on the bottom of the agenda.
I, okay. I see.
Yeah. So there isn't another document.
I got you. So I was thinking of the website, but thank you, Mr. White. More appear towards, yeah. Ms. Jenny Smith had asked, "I would like to know how many kids per teacher for remote learning? I'd like to know when sixth-grade remote learning schedules will be available? I'd like to know why it seems like the remote learners are being punished for remote learning? I'd like to know how sixth-grade remote learning will work? How will they log on? I'd like to know how gym class will work for remote learners for 6th and 12th grade." So most of those questions I've answered tonight in reference to schedules. Sixth grade and K6 virtual teachers will be out by the end of this week, we hope earlier than Friday, but by Friday at the latest. And how to log on, how to get that information, our teachers will reach out through an email and contact information on how to set up for the initial Google Classroom information. So they'll receive an invite to their parent's email address that's registered, and that will be the initial conversation. From there, the teacher will take it as to what the schedule looks like, and we believe that will continue to evolve. Physical education in the remote learning area will be a combination at the K6 level will be virtual activities that will be optional. Our phys ed teachers will design activities that you can do from home, very similar to what they did when we did the virtual field day in the spring. So a lot of activities for each week, themes over the course of the fall and into the winter time, understanding that you can't repeat everything that you have in a physical education class in a gymnasium at home, but be creative with some ideas of how students can get active and out from behind their desks. At 12th grade, if a student is virtual, we will be doing a combination of live streams from the teacher as well as using a program called Platform, which will design for fitness tracking. So students at the upper levels, 7th through 12th grade, will use a program called Platform that their classroom teachers will help to send out to them. They will design fitness programs and allow students to provide feedback electronically to the teachers on their fitness goals. So some of it will be individualized in that regard, monitored by the classroom teacher and almost like the personal fitness trainer in the virtual world. So some of the encouragement that you see in those kind of environments. But that'll be handled a little differently for the upper levels because we're in a hybrid model than at the K6 level. Mrs. Bredeis wanted to thank the South County staff, community, and family members who participated in the SHAPE assessment in partnership with the New York State Office of Family and Health. A team of 17 staff members had met over the last three months in assessing the district's social, emotional, learning, and mental health supports. This was a huge undertaking and much needed, especially during this time of COVID. Our students and staff mental health must be prioritized for learning to be successful this year, and she said, "Thank you." So we thanked Ms. Bredeis. She had made us aware of the SHAPE program. Tim Fowler and many of our support personnel for school social workers, psychologists had gotten together to evaluate, do a three-month self-evaluation to better provide for some social, emotional platforms for our students. So we think it was time well served. We do thank those staffers who came in during the summertime and worked on that project, and we think it's going to help the district. So thank you to Ms. Bredeis as well. That's it.
Number 3, what's the action items? Policy committee, Mr. Jennings?
So I refresh here. We met on August 24th. First one we talked about was an update on the policy service. It looks like we're ready at our end. We're kind of waiting on this, but I know they're working a lot with what we choose. I don't know, since then, we had any contact there?
I have, actually. I did talk with her, and she's going to handle South County herself right now because they are having some staffing issues. So I am working on converting all of those PDFs into Word documents just to kind of help push it along.
For those first three seconds, yeah.
Correct.
And we have a shared folder so we can exchange.
We can do that. Yes. So that will be done over the next couple of weeks.
Great. We talked about the family engagement, our family involvement policy, 1221, because we have reviewed the one that was for title one specifically last year. Committee talked about it briefly, but we said we should probably wait for input from the family engagement committee before we connect and revise that whole thing, so we'll be looking, Mr. Back, to hear some input on that from his committee. Alcohol and drug testing of bus drivers. We had some minor updates to that based on some regulation changes from the state last year. So that's up for single reading and approval tonight. We also talked about who's to close other support organizations and putting together some, a policy and maybe some guidelines, so making sure they all meet some sort of minimum of standards to help support our programs. We took a look at a draft that was produced based on some of the several other districts, and we had a lot of comments on that, and another draft to be coming back next month. And we have a list of lots of policies that are in the queue, as well as the list I gave to Dr. Perry after the, we're going to get together again in October.
Yeah, we wanted to pass a committee approval.
On behalf of the policy committee, I've moved to approve policy 8414.5, alcohol and drug testing of bus drivers as presented.
Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Same, carry, 820. Next, we have facilities, transportation committees, Mr. Ryan, Mr. Casey, and Jeff.
Okay, I will start. This is our, was our first attempt at the combined facilities and transportation committees as one, and it was quite a long meeting, but we got a lot covered. We have the notes in front of you, so I won't be teaching everyone, just the highlights, the high school. The roof work is completed on the mug entrance. Ongoing work is continuing on the tennis courts. In terms of the mug sound system, new speakers were installed, and it was completed as far as I understand. I haven't been able to hear it yet, but I guess it's going to work. There's no one.
You'll be able to hear it from your car, from what I understand.
I'm sure so.
Big difference.
Good improvement. Okay. At Forest Park, the lighting is completed. There was a delay in the vestal work and in terms of between the meeting and now, I don't know what, if anything else is.
There still is. The entrance is currently accessible, but they're still waiting on what they call the stick items, so some of the aluminum and then the glass ordering. what they call the stick items. So some of the aluminum and then the glass ordering. They anticipate that coming in sometime in October, and the project hopefully being done by November. At that time, they'll be able to use alternate entrances at the building, so there'll be limited impact to the students and staff there. But some delays due to the COVID pandemic.
Remember the lights. Lightyear Kill and boilers are still being installed. I don't believe that's been completed yet.
Nope. Again, very similar. They've gone as far as they can. They do understand that they want to get boilers fired up before the cold weather season comes into play. That's going to be happening in the first two weeks of September. So they.
They'll not interfere with the opening of.
Will not interfere with the opening of school. It's all back end of the building. At this point in time, all the work has been done, with the exception of having the boilers installed and fired up. So overall, a very big improvement there, and we're happy. We're just waiting on the final contractor items.
A lot of work been done. Roselle Bell, the security vestibule, vestibule will be ready for return. I believe that's still on schedule to be completed for school opening. Roof repair has been completed. At Saddlewood, the vestibule area will be functional, functioned for the start of the school year also. There are a number of delays throughout the projects because of the situation we're in. We talked about the turning around the area that Neil had mentioned in the back where the book depository was. Shaker Road, working on an alternative entry. Okay, Shaker Road, we're working on the alternative entrance by the book depository. We talked about that. Veters, there was some delays, so some of the work being done there due to Smart Schools funding situation.
So, Mr. Ryan, both Shaker Road, Veter, and Lightyear Kill were funded through the Smart Schools Bond Act as part of the capital.
Work.
So that was not approved until August, which meant those vestibules could not start.
Right.
So that's the delay. Those will be worked on throughout the fall. Again, separate entrances and egresses are available to the students and staff, and we are hopeful that they can be completed by late fall, sometime in November at this point in time. The good thing is by the end of the 2020 school year, we should have security vestibules in all of our eight buildings.
It's coming along as well as can be expected under these circumstances. Phase four, we're looking at planning an additional meeting to discuss the scope of work. That's up in the air. Over on the next page, COVID-19 training. Work was in place for all of the sanitation training has taken place for staff, additional cleaning of the bathrooms, railings, et cetera. Sneeze guards and plexiglass are installed in the nurses' offices, clerical stations, and greeters' desks. And last thing, I'm out recording, and we have, the district has purchased a number of 13 large-scale misting devices to clean larger areas. Custodial staff members are going to be redistributed to buildings as needed. This will also include not only the custodial staff, but also the custodial mechanics will be able to be available to assist them, and this will be a moving target. We'll see who has to be where and what needs to be done. But they're working on it. They have a good handle on it. And we'll go to transportation. Who's facing?
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. With the reduction of students on the buses, that will reduce the bus capacity to 20 to 30 students. And with the large-scale misting devices Mr. Ryan just mentioned, the buses will be cleaned by the drivers in between runs. The misters will be used to clean the entire, entire bus. Over the last few years, we've been looking to purchase, obtain land or a building to move our transportation center from the ancient building over on Winston Place. We've looked at four different properties through the help with Ms. Fisher. We have four that we're looking at. We're looking at a possible referendum in '22, '23. The committee is going to meet again. We're going to tour the four facilities that, the properties to take a look at them for consideration. And that's, that's been ongoing, and they continue to be ongoing. The bus lifts in the bus garage, we've had some problems with, some deterioration because of a number of factors. The lifts are still available. We're waiting for an update. Unfortunately, the materials used to fix them is delayed in production because of the COVID situation. The 2022 bus replacement plan, we've discussed further scaling back the bus replacement plan due to challenging finances, as we've discussed quite a bit here this evening. Any savings in not purchasing the buses might result, would result in a one-year lag for state aid and any savings. We've scheduled two other meetings in September and October of the Combined Facilities and Transportation Committee. And, Madam President, will we receive any questions, if anybody has any?
I would just like to emphasize that the bus lifts are safe.
Safe.
It's, it's not that there's any, anything dangerous about them, but they do need.
It's not going to collapse on one of the workers if that's the concern. It's some of the deterioration around the rim of the concrete and the metal come together. It needs to be taken care of. Needs to be addressed. But they're still operable. They're safe. They're inspected quite regularly, and it's just waiting for the repairs, and the material hasn't been made yet.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
See the Code of Conduct?
Yes. On a yearly basis, we hold a public care-related Code of Conduct. Tonight, we present to the board both the plain language summary, which if you didn't start in the full Code of Conduct, this covers our students at all levels, pre-8th through 12th grade. Minor adjustments this year, some due to changes in, in language technology, like e-cigarette, e-filter type of environment, and some minor tweaks due to COVID-19 overall. Not too many changes to this year's policy.
Any questions?
I fail to mention one thing in the facilities report. We had talked about it before, and some signage has been installed on some of the athletic fields that they are not available for public use at this time. I know that at the high school, I believe they're at the middle schools also. Just something to emphasize what we talked about here in terms of keeping individuals safe and off of the field at this time. That subject to change when things clear up, but that signage has been installed.
Did we really receive any comments from the public between Rice and you listening to the public conduct ring?
We did not. We did not.
Thank you, Mr. Rolli, for doing all those updates I see.
Okay. May I have a motion? Second, Mr. Casey. So, a motion made by Mr. Sims, second by Mr. Casey. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. St. Mary's 820. For the South Colony District-wide school safety plan, may I have a motion? Mr. Johanning? Second by Mr. Ryan.
Certainly. August 2015, Mr. Rolli had gone over our school district's safety plan. We have not only a district-wide plan, but individual building emergency response plans. He will continue to work with the building principals for adjustments. Most of the changes this year will relate to the pandemic response, COVID-19 protocols, if you will. That's in alignment with New York State's requirements. We are required to submit those plans in early October. We'll leave that deadline. Mr. Rolli, anything else you want to add?
No, just presenting to the board that if there was a question, if we received any comments, I know I didn't from the public, so.
Any other questions? Okay, a motion made by Mr. Johanning, second by Mr. Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. St. Mary's 820. Number eight, reports and recommendations for action. We're looking at eight through I, pages four through six. Questions to King?
Oh, no questions. Getting ahead of myself.
Can I have a? Sorry.
That's what I was trying to help you with. Wasn't a big shock.
Do we get a second? Oh, yes, it's called, sorry.
Any questions on my question?
Ms. Fisher, letter G, change orders, my favorite topic.
They're all negative.
I see that. Could you tell me and the board and other folks that are watching tonight, this money that we've saved, does that go back into a fund? Is that kept somewhere in case of, if you will?
Well, these were change orders that were determined through a value engineering process. You may remember that when we initially put the school safety project out to bid, that the bids came in very high.
Correct.
So we did some value engineering. They're really extra parts that we're not buying so that we were able, that and a little bit of electrical work, we were able to scale these back. Right now, the budget's pretty tight. If we do have money left over, what we generally do is return it to the general fund, and it's used to support future budgets.
Well, on some of these, it says the part's not needed.
Yeah, that's because what they had done in the original plans is they had specked out like five additional spare parts, and we said, "No," you know, we were over budget, and we wanted to get the budget down to a better number.
Still safe, still operable, still within specs.
Right. It really is just extra parts that we're going to sit on a shelf, which we did not think was.
Integrated PA fire alarm system at end unit. Each building was originally designed to have five, five spares in each building, times the number of buildings we're doing. Rather than have 25 to 40 additional spares, we've reduced that number to five total district-wide. And there's some of the savings that you see as an example.
Again, still safe, still operable, still within spec and code.
And budget.
Very good. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? A motion made by Mr. King, second by Mrs. Cogan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. St. Mary's 820. Personnel instruction, may I have a motion? Mr. Ryan, second, Mr. Casey. Make a look at pages 17 through 15.
Yes, I don't wish for a lot of you. Want to talk about Ms. Weeks or, like, I can start. I just want to thank and recommend Mrs. Weeks, who is looking to retire this year. She's done an outstanding job with our students at the high school for 30 years for Colony, and we wish her exceptionally well in her retirement. She'll be sorely missed, but outstanding staff members, done a great job for us.
Yeah, Carolyn's a special person, great teacher, and I know there's probably a lot of students who are going to be disappointed that they didn't get a chance to say goodbye, and I'm sure they'll find ways to do that. Wish her the best. We had a nice conversation before. She turned her paperwork, though.
Thank you.
Nice person, great personality, very easy to talk to.
Always fun.
So we, there's a leave of absence, but then it shows up again as a temporary appointment. Can you just clarify?
You talking about Jen?
Yeah.
Oh, Jen is taking a position in the district, a teacher on special assignment.
Okay.
So this is, she's taking a leave from her current position, and she'll be working with the PBS department for the coming year's CSC chair.
Okay.
So we had a staff member who resigned in August to take a position outside of the district. Jen has agreed to take over that role for the year, a temporary basis, so.
That makes sense.
We have to backfill her elementary lead position, and then she'll take that teacher on special assignment.
I was just trying to figure out the site for that.
Any other questions? Countermotion made by Mr. Ryan, second by Mr. Casey. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. St. Mary's 820. Personnel support, may I have a motion? Mr. Sims, second by Mr. Casey. And that's pages 16 through 19.
Just a quick question. I'm looking at some bus driving positions there. Do you know if we are okay with numbers in terms of drivers? We're still looking. How's that, how's that going?
Right, right now, I think we are.
I think we're okay. He's always looking. He's always looking for.
Subs, or?
Yeah, looking for subs.
Subs are always.
Absolutely. We'll put the shameless plug out there for anybody that's in the virtual land. If you're looking for employment, we train our drivers, so you don't have to come in with any but a clean driving license and a H21. We'll, we'll train you. You get paid during the training. We work with our driver trainers to help you pass the CDL bus driver exam. But it is paid training, and then at this particular time, the openings are for substitutes, but we certainly anticipate we always have need. So please either apply to human resources, contact the transportation department, or if you have a friend, feel free to recommend friends. So thank you.
Now backdoor approach.
Shameless plug right there.
Crack your website for that.
Any other questions? A motion made by Mr. Sims, second by Mr. King. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. St. Mary's 820. Number 11, agreement for district office administration. May I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
So I can take this. When this was approved, it was the August 25th meeting, but unfortunately due to just a photocopying error, we missed one of the pages. You had received, I think, the odd number of pages and was missing the back of one page. So we want to put the agreement back on. Does not change the terms that were approved at the 25th meeting, but we want to make sure you had all the detailed pages.
Any questions? A motion made by Mr. Ryan, second by Mr. Johanning. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. St. Mary's 820. Which resolution, authorization for self-sure procurement can I have a motion? Mr. Sims? Mrs. Cogan?
This is a online subscription to allow for our school-to-work program. We've talked about, and had some public comments of previous bullet beans, whether or not we are going to be able to allow for our special needs students that do work site locations in the community. This is one of the ways that we are going to provide that. This is the online subscription that allows for our students to have a virtual experience. Comes with the toolkits as well. We're also looking at, obviously, real experiences to the greatest extent possible that we can do in-house, so we don't have to send our students out to businesses due to COVID restrictions, but we think this is a good step in the right direction. Self-source procurement is a letter that indicates this is the only company that offers this particular product, and this letter documents that.
Any questions? A motion made by Mr. Sims, second by Mrs. Cogan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. St. Mary's 820. Number 13, resolution. May I have a motion?
Aye.
And Mr. King, thank you. And Mr. Adams?
So National Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th, October 15th celebrates the histories and culture and contribution of American citizens whose ancestors come from Spain, Mexico, Caribbean, Central and South America. It goes back to 1968 with Lyndon Johnson and then President Reagan in 1980. The thing I found different on this one, though, is it starts on September 15th and goes to October 15th. I actually came across why, because on September 15th is when five Latin American countries gained their independence: Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua. So if you're wondering on that, that's why it starts on the 15th. September 17th goes back to the ratification of the Constitu-, uh, the signing of the Constitution, sorry, on September 17th, 1787, back to the 1940s, when the original name was I Am an American Day. Revitalized in 2004 with Senator Robert Byrd, who is best known for always having a copy of the Constitution in his pocket, can pass legislation directing educational institutions to accept federal funds, total program for students on that day. We usually satisfy the minimum requirements of that by announcing some, morning announcements, but we also have the proclamations up in the future.
Thank you. Any questions? Countermotion made by Mr. Johanning, second by Mr. King. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. St. Mary's 820. Then if you would like to look at our. Then if you would like to look at our future meetings, anyone? Yes, we already have a change.
Yep. Six. Could I ask a question, please? They, you, I know, Madam President, we have had some preliminary discussions with Mr. Longo, who's going to come from the School Boards Association.
Yeah.
Did it all, anytime you talk about committee meetings, have you discussed it? Because we've, we've been going back and forth, can you have more than the committee at a committee meeting or not? Because I, I would like to attend the ACT, ACT meeting, but I don't know if that's A, A permitted, or B, is it, it's, it's too many people, it irrelevant.
Which one?
We can clarify with him. We don't, we don't vote, so we don't, it's not the same venue as a.
It'll be in that document.
It is, and I look through it to give you the, the quick answer to that is, you can attend, because the committees are not decision-making bodies. They're only when they, the Board is getting together for anticipation of an action item that they would be doing. So when you have the committees, they're usually making recommendations to the full Board, so in the event that you're looking to attend one of those academic achievement or another committee, you can without violating the form.
Okay. That, is, is it permitted, will there be a big enough venue for extra people to be there, and we must maintain our?
I, I think academic achievement, we certainly.
You know, in that one, we're actually going to be inviting, like, as well as Mr. Barra, Mr. Lovett, to talk about some of the things that are happening a little bit in schools, so they maybe virtually are arriving, so we'll have more people anyway, so I wouldn't be surprised if the same way we handled Hall of Fame earlier that we just come in here, spread out, and try to get them by 20 out of quarter, obviously, to transition people.
Thank you.
A couple of quick items for the Board to be aware. September 29th is not on here, but that is going to be the Audit Finance Committee meeting. We needed to have a Audit Finance Committee meeting prior to October, October's Board meeting in order for the Board to consider the recommendations and for Ms. Fisher to be able to meet the October 15th deadline. So in lieu of the October 13th meeting, that'll move to September 29th. And then the Board training, which is just a training we're looking at in October 1st, that's the Invisva training that we're mentioning, 6 to 7:30, we'll get additional information out to the full Board, but that's, we're looking through the calendar, just may note that night.
Is, is the September 24th Facilities Transportation, that is the, the looking at the.
The tour of the properties.
That's the tour, and then we were going to come down here and have a working dinner and go through all the facility stuff.
You promised a dinner, didn't you?
Dinner?
We had.
And we're moving October 6.
I have a retired husband, he.
October, oh, yes, thanks, Mr. King. October 6th, earlier this evening, we had a graduation athletics Hall of Fame meeting due to some of the COVID restrictions. That committee is recommending to cancel that October 6th meeting, and we have a meeting in December on the 8th, so the October 6th graduation Hall of Fame Committee meeting will be canceled. Lot of updates there. Mr. Ryan, any question?
One, one further question. Coming up on September 11th, again, what do we have planned, if anything, for recognizing that date?
We, we don't have students in attendance, but the plan was to obviously recognize the day when staff are here, do some things on the following Monday to educate our students when they do return on the 14th. So we'll, we'll certainly recognize the remembrance of, of the 19th anniversary, both on the 11th, when staff are here, but again, on the 14th, our students come. That's.
Really good, thank you.
Yeah, I would think it would be happening the week of 14.
Anything else?
Dr. Perry, would you tell us, you told the committee, but maybe the rest of us, I'm not sure exactly what it was either, but what's happening with athletics? You're going to meet with other suburban, or, or other area superintendents?
On Friday, the New York State Public High School Athletic Association sent out their guidance documents related to potential for reopening athletics in New York State. Obviously, we've been working closely with athletic directors, but the area superintendents are also going to be on not only a morning call tomorrow, but at 2 o'clock, the suburban council superintendents, which are directly our individual competitors for sports, are going to get on and discuss the parameters as to what, what may and may not be able to be feasible in terms of reopening considerations for athletics. So that'll be just, again, part of that process to do some due diligence as to what is recommended in the guidance and what area districts are believing that they can safely facilitate for their students.
But is, is it possible that the suburban council has some other plans other than the district-wide or statewide?
Yes, I mean, the state guidance only indicates that athletics could begin as early as the 21st. It doesn't require a school board or school district to start athletics on the 21st. So some of the conversations in other sections, not just Section 2, is whether or not they are going to choose to have athletics at all in the fall. I know some other sections downstate had already eliminated that, but they're reevaluating their positions. Section 2 had not taken a stance. They want to look at the guidance, and now that the guidance is out from the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, and the government has given the ability for local districts to make that determination, we're going to evaluate the safety protocols in place. So that's the.
Now, is this, is the suburban council, I can't remember who's in it anymore, is it, is Albany City Schools, are they?
Albany is part of suburban council, Skekti, Shenandoah, Bethlehem, Yilin, Shaker, ourselves, Boston Spaw. Burn Hills and some sports and things like that, Abel Park, East Green Rush College High School, Troy for competition as well, Mahanasan, and I think Mahanasan actually switched to the colonial council now. They were, they were a few years back. There's about anywhere from 12 to 14 school districts that are involved, and again, you know, focus is on how those individual districts are looking to facilitate plans, and obviously, collectively, as, as area participants, we need to somewhat be on the same page with a group, because if you don't have nobody to play, there's really no sense in having a 21st opening, so that's what they're looking at. How to, how to safely do those things and kind of what each district is looking at. So ultimately, that'll be up to, you know, the South County Board of Education as to what they want to approve in terms of sports, and we'll take that guidance collectively from all of our suburban, uh, school district counterparts as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion go to the executive session? Mr. Ryan, second by Mr. Casey? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stain, carries eight to zero at 8:18.
I got it. You got it. Hi, everyone. Hi, everyone.